And time all the way forward.
Is six thirty, so I will call the Virgus City Council's meeting to order. We uh, October twenty first meeting. And just as a reminder, at our last meeting, we approved having these um. Our recording place can show on YouTube, so I just want to remind everyone. That this will be shown um in the recording. And just to kind of keep it clean, if you're going to speak, if you're making knowledge, so we don't just have conversations jumping. Just so that those viewing it um will have a clear understanding of who's speaking and the topics. Um Julie, any citizen concerns?
None of them brought to me.
Um agenda of additions and deletions, I'll just note two up front. Uh remove the twenty twenty five council portfolio, that shouldn't be, they will address that with the new year. Um the committees already have people that might be going off and some going on, so um okay. So remove that. And then in front of you, you have a gaming resolution, and this is sort of the fighter department. Can do offsite gambling for their fundraiser this weekend. Um so um that is being placed in the consent agenda. Anybody else have any? Anything else that they want changed?
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda has changed.
Okay, we got to approve the agenda overall.
Yes.
And then we'll do the consent agenda, but these were my changes.
Make a motion to amend the agenda per your uh two items noted.
Okay, so approval of the agenda, Bruce, and the second.
Yeah.
Um all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Now the consent agenda, knowing we have those two changes. Um.
I move to. Do that.
We have a motion for the consent agenda, is there a second?
Oh, so good.
We have a second plan, James. Um all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Uh consent agenda approved. Um next, we have Patrick. Patrick Paulister here, we had worked with him, how was that?
Yeah, twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so and he's going to be talking about the transportation alternative grant, so.
Yes, so back in twenty twenty three, um partnership health funded a trail plan. Uh for the city of Virgus and Lisa sort of uh took charge of that. And I brought with me three boards from uh that trail plan, I still have them from our public meetings. And uh it came to my attention a couple of months ago. That there is an upcoming grant opportunity that uh Virgus could take advantage of to build. A portion of the trail plan. Um and I think first, uh it's kind of tricky to be able to. Show these boards to YouTube, the live audience and you simultaneously, but I think what I'll do here is uh. Put this one down. We we looked primarily at two things, I'll just show it to everybody. Uh we looked, well, sure, oh, sorry. Okay. We look primarily at at two connections. One is um sure. One was connecting Virgus to Frazee. Uh or uh another way to think of it is connecting the city of Virgus to the Heartland Trail, because the Heartland Trail goes through Frazee. And I know it may be hard for some people on YouTube or in the back to see, but we have several routes. The small dots are the ones we considered, but ultimately did not choose. The big dots uh east along sixty and then north through uh Worth uh W P A. Uh is the route ultimately that that we recommended. And then there was a second. The second major link. I I'll try to get you on, or or you can you can hang on to that, that's fine. Thank you, Your Honor. The uh the second major link that we looked at. Was connecting Virgus to Maywood State Park, and we, once again. The small dots are routes that we considered, but um ultimately did not choose, we ended up landing on thirty five. Now, uh. Uh Julie, help me out here. The during during the process of the plan. Otter Tail County approached us and said, well, we're planning on doing some work on thirty five anyway. And we can't, you know, right now, we can't give you a complete separated trail, but we could at least give you wider wider shoulder, right? And has that? Forgive me, I'm a little bit behind, has that occurred, or is that planned, or what's going on?
Uh this summer, they widened thirty five. But instead of putting it on one side, which is what our plan was, they divided it and put, so you would be able to drive on both sides. Or drive on both sides or walk on both sides. But yes, it is connecting.
Okay, and as a result of that, have you noticed people biking on that uh on the on the shoulders?
It just finished.
It just finished, okay, so maybe we need a full season next year to to really see that too. Okay, so. Um let me uh, you can you can put it down, thank you. Um. Uh so let me talk a little bit about this grant, and Julie, uh I've been talking to Julie a little bit about it too, she's uh. She's familiar with this, but um. The so the grant is called Transportation Alternatives, it's federal money. But the federal government gives it to each state Department of Transportation, and then the. And it's actually the state MINDOT in our case that is in charge. Of distributing it among applicants, uh cities or counties, or other units of government that are interested in the funding. Um. There are two pots of money that are available uh to apply for this fall. There is a four and it, and I'm talking specifically about MINDOT District Four, so this is our, I think it's eleven county, eleven county area. Which includes Otter Tail County. There is a pot of money in the amount of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars available in twenty twenty nine. And there is another pot of eight hundred thousand dollars available in twenty thirty. They are inviting uh communities within MINDOT District Four to apply for either one of those or both. Um obviously, the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars would not be available until twenty twenty nine. Uh for whoever was awarded that. And the eight hundred thousand dollars would not be available until twenty thirty. Um now, the way transportation alternatives works, let's say that, for example. Uh Virgus applied for and got a portion of that six hundred and twenty thousand dollars available in twenty twenty nine. Uh if you wanted to build before twenty twenty nine, you could. But you have to wait until twenty twenty nine to get your money. So you can build early, but you're not allowed to build late, so what's not allowed is. Virgus gets their money in twenty twenty nine and and they think, well, thanks, uh we'll we'll build it in twenty thirty two, that doesn't work, you have to build by the year that you receive it. Um I should also point out that there is a twenty percent local match required, so this isn't one hundred percent free money. Um. I emailed to uh Julie a couple of websites uh to get more information, there is a um. There is a general MINDOT website for the entire state, and then there is also the MINDOT District Four specific website. And uh there are kind of two phases to an application. The first one is the letter of intent, which is, that's actually quite brief, and both of these things need to be submitted online. The letter of intent needs to be submitted online by November seventh, twenty twenty five. That you're just sending a letter to MINDOT online saying, we're interested in applying for this. You give a brief description of what the project is. Um and then uh the full application is due on January. I've got it written down here, hang on, January ninth. Full application is due on January ninth, obviously, the full applic- January ninth, twenty twenty six, obviously, the full application is more in depth. Um part of the purpose for the letter of intent is. Uh I think within within about a month, so like by December seventh. MINDOT District Four will reply to your letter of intent. With sort of an assessment of your of the potential success of your application. So if we're way off base, they'll say, nice try, but but you just don't have a chance, all right? If we're if we're really strong, they'll say, this is great, and now there's there is a, there's kind of a middle ground there, they might say, well, this is a good potential application. But have you thought about this, have you thought about that, you could strengthen it if you change X, Y, or Z. So. What uh I guess why I'm here this evening to suggest to the council is that. You consider, and I don't I don't know exactly how your procedures work, but if 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 appropriate or if necessary. Vote to authorize Julie to submit a letter of intent. Submit by November seventh, submitting a letter of intent does not commit the council or the city to submitting a full application. If Julie submits a letter of intent by November seventh. And then later on, uh after Thanksgiving. Uh while everybody's ju- digesting your turkey, you think, you know what, I. Uh I don't think we really want to apply for this, that's okay, there's no, there's no blame, there's no shame, there's no harm. So. I guess my suggestion would be that that uh if you think this is something you're potentially interested in. You don't have to decide tonight whether or not uh you want to submit a full application, but I'm just suggesting that. You authorize Julie to submit a letter of intent. Uh and that will buy you some time, and I'd be happy to come to a uh, you know, your your next meeting. That would buy you some time to uh contemplate a little bit more, do you want to submit a uh? For a full application or not, the other thing I I guess I do want to make more comments here, so when I say that. There's a pot of money of six hundred and twenty thousand available in twenty twenty nine, and another pot of eight hundred thousand available in twenty thirty. That is the total that in each of those years that MINDOT District Four could award to a community. Now, it's been. MINDOT District Four's longstanding practice that when possible, their preference is to award. Two communities per year, so what they're really, they hope that they'll get like. Uh twelve or fourteen applications, so they'll have lots to choose from within MINDOT District Four. And they'll find two that they really like. And out of the six hundred and twenty thousand for twenty twenty nine, they'll give one of them three hundred and ten and the other one three hundred and ten, that's that's how they prefer to do things. Now, once in a while. They'll get. Fourteen applications and they only like one of them. And so they say, you win the whole pie. And that would be great if uh if that happened to Virgus, but who knows? Um same thing with the twenty thirty money. Eight hundred thousand dollars, that it would be MINDOT District Four's preference to out of the dozen applicants. Applications they get, choose their top two, give each one about four hundred. It could be three hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty, it could be three hundred and five hundred, it could be whatever, but roughly split it in half, give it to give it to two uh. Two different applicants. So and then the other thing I guess I would say is that um. If you, so if you started thinking. Uh let's say, let's say you want to shoot for twenty thirty. And so you're looking at that eight hundred thousand dollars, and you're thinking, all right, Pat tells us that, you know. If we're successful, we we can anticipate getting awarded probably half of that, because they'll give half to somebody else, so we're talking four hundred thousand dollars. What could we build for four hundred thousand dollars? So. I know that because uh Otter Tail just finished their shoulder widening on thirty five. You might want to go for a separated trail on thirty five, or you might think, well, let's let's. Let's wait on that, because we want to see how the public utilizes those shoulders. We want to see uh how popular those shoulders are, maybe we could, maybe we should look north and shoot for Frazee instead. And I think that if you. Um. If you thought about it that way. You'd have to, for example, you're, who do you who do you normally use for your engineering services? With Seth. Ask With Seth, how far could four hundred thousand dollars get us along the recommended path here, and I'll show these folks. Along the recommended path here to Frazee. Because it's possible that four hundred thousand will only get you halfway. And uh and also, obviously, there's going to have to be some discussion with the folks here. Um now, when we had preliminary conversations with with these folks. Cause that's the, is that the National Park Service that up?
U S Fish and Wildlife.
U S Fish and Wildlife, okay. When we when we had, we had some preliminary conversations with U S Fish and Wildlife back in twenty twenty three, and they weren't. Opposed to us going through there, but obviously, that's an ecologically sensitive area, and so they were concerned about how we would go through there. So I think there would, there would definitely have to be discussions on that point, but it might be that if if you talk to With Seth, they might say, well. Four hundred thousand dollars would really only get you half, it wo- it wouldn't even get you to to uh to the wild, what what what's it called, a wildlife refuge area?
Yeah, waterfall production area.
Okay, waterfall production area, it won't. Your With Seth might, if you ask him, they might tell you, well, it's not even going to get you all the way to the wa- waterfall. Production area, it's only going to get you about three quarters of the way there, but that's okay. You know, because we got to build this thing piece by piece, and even if, even if, let's say you apply for that. And you get it, and you build it in twenty thirty, and it doesn't quite get there, but it gets part of the way there, first of all, people. You you'll be surprised how many people are going to use it, lots of people will use it, lots of the residents along there will use it, so. Um you know, it has to be done piece by piece, I would imagine that if you got. If you ask With Seth to give you a cost estimate. Along that recommended path from Virgus all the way to Frazee, it's probably going to exceed four hundred thousand, in fact, it might even exceed the eight hundred. Eight hundred thousand, so, but it it would be worth investing, so. I think I think for purposes of the letter of intent. Uh Julie, you can keep it vague, and you could just say, you know, we're intending to apply to build a portion of. Of the route from Virgus to Frazee, and I'm assuming that. You know, if you want to shoot for thirty five, that's fine, but I'm assuming that because you just put the shoulders in there, you might want to sit on that, you know, a little bit and see. See how the public is utilizing those shoulders first, you know. So I'll I'll leave it there, that anybody have any questions?
My only change from that before, just to, is we would want to do a partnership with Otter Tail County, with Becker County and with Frazee. And we would actually um. Cause I've been speaking with the Park and Rec from Otter Tail County, we would use the energy nearing services of Otter Tail County, and it is their base. So um we would want to work with all of the other three entities before we would move ahead with the grant. I think the letter of intent is is wonderful, but we will want to make sure we have. Um Otter Tail County, Becker County, and Frazee on board uh before we do the application.
That's an excellent point, Julie, because Virgus is a city of less than five thousand people. It, when it comes time to submitting the full application, it actually would have to be Otter Tail County. That that is the official applicant, obviously in very close coordination with Virgus.
Would they participate in any of the funding, you know, otherwise, you know, we put it, you get it, and you, it's like, we have eighty thousand then. If if it was four hundred, um I would be responsible for.
Right, I have spoken with the new um uh. Jody, the new engineer, um uh. Bro, um county engineer, the um and I have spoken with Kevin from Parks and Recs, there's been no. Commitments, no, we're just in the talking stage, so.
Mayor, uh if I can ask a question, Patrick. Do you coordinate all these efforts, I mean, we're talking about Otter Tail County, Becker County, this partnership for health come in and say, okay, we need to get all these. Players maybe in a room and and say whose role is what or?
Uh I'd be happy to help facilitate uh in that regard, but uh I guess I suggested to Julie on the phone that uh. Virgus kind of served as the lead agency on this because the original plan was done by Virgus, you know. But 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 obviously, yes, Otter Tail County, Becker County, Frazee, and um. Uh and Virgus are all going to have to be involved, I would be happy to assist in any way uh that would be helpful.
And obviously, not for this first letter of intent, very simple, just say, hey, we're applying. And like you said, we don't have to accept it, we don't know, they may reject us, we may be out, but. I think to take advantage of the opportunity. I would make a motion that we uh would have. Julie write that letter of intent and submit it by the deadline date of November seventh.
And we have a the second, can I call any other discussion or questions? For Patrick. Call for the vote, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Our motion carried to to proceed with the letter of intent.
Thank you very much, and and in fact, I will leave you with the boards. Um someday I'll someday I'll want them back, but for the next two months, you can hang on to them and show them to your good residents if you want to, so. All right, take care, everybody.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I'll work it using what.
Thank you, my dear chef. Thanks, Moon. Okay, the next order of assistance is utility bill one twenty three, named Street. Um Paul, bro.
And if you, so there is one there, so. Okay, um. I guess the reason I'm here today is that. I have, as you see, received a bill from the city of Virgus for water main service to. Uh my storage garage that's located directly behind the police office. The bill uh reflects a look back of three years on the water service. And one month of service this year. The service to that building was put in in nineteen ninety five. And has never ever had a water bill. I received a building that was given to me by my mother in two thousand fifteen. And had never received a bill since then. So what I've given you here is a little timeline on trying to get the service disconnected from that building. During the parking lot construction. So. The first time I was notified was I got a call from Julie Lambert on September eleventh at eleven forty one a.m. They're telling me that I am going to start receiving a bill for that property with a look back of three years. At the time of our conversation, it only lasted two minutes and fourteen seconds. I understood what she was saying, and I said at that time, I don't believe that I should be charged for that water. For that service, and if I'm going to be charged, let's disconnect it during the time of the construction of the parking lot. So that's the first time the city was notified that I wanted to have it disconnected. So if you go to the following page. Let's do it, stay at the first goal, so at the council meeting on nine sixteen. There must have been a discussion with the council, if you look at the front of the council right right here, nine sixteen, the few references. The council must have approved the look back and the uh future bill. Now, I was never contacted to be informed about it, I was never contacted to attend the council meeting discussing that water main. Okay. The curb stops. But so anyway, on the next page. Bruce Albright contacted, or I contacted Bruce for the Monday, September seventh. And what is showing here is just text messages captures from April. I apologize, I'm not so great with the computers, so some came out bigger, some came out smaller, but it's in chronological order, so on September seventeen. Bruce and I met at eleven o'clock in the morning. Um I went and showed Bruce, uh was first off, Bruce met without we overlooked. But the curb stops were the existing ones, they were still in place and showing after they had scripted parking lot of the asphalt. The two new curb stops were laying on the boulevard next to the liquor store. So Bruce showed me some ordinances that I don't know if they applied or not, they were pretty vague. I never got a copy of them, and after we walked through the whole situation, I felt that. The meeting went very well, and that Bruce said he was going to talk to Julie Lambert. Um about the whole situation, and he was going to talk to her directly after the meeting that we had on that Monday. So Bruce, did you talk to Julie after that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Um and what was your conversation?
Basically, that you told me, you said, if you need to unhook it, unhook it, I don't want to, I don't want water, I don't. I don't have a sewer in my building, uh just unhook it and it'll be done, that's what the ordinances talked about was saying, if you want to disconnect you, un-unhook it at the curb stop. Correct, and that was our understanding, and her response basically was to me, we need that directly in writing from you. Because I was like, you know, the second party here, second hand. And she said, we really should get that directly from the building owner. And I think that's where. Things probably went on, then maybe for the next week, maybe or ten days, almost longer, you know, correspondence back and forth saying. You need to apply for a permit to disconnect it, cause we gave you that permit back in September to say, if you want to unhook it. The council voted to say, unhook it.
What did I do, you know?
Well, we talked about.
This is the first off, let me figure, this is the very first time I've heard that I had to reply in writing, I've gotten zero correspondence from the city regarding this issue.
I don't know that the word in writing was saying, but she said you needed to come in and directly talk to her.
So I responded that, I was never communicated in any way coming about with the city, cause I felt talking to Bruce, I'm talking to the city. Yeah. So. After that. Um. The curb stops were installed on the following Friday, which was two days after Bruce and I met. Which with these, we met on the seventeenth, and the curb stop were installed on the nineteenth, when the city offices were closed. And my service was reconnected to the new curb stop. Okay? So they had two days for the city to communicate with the general contractor. Not to install the curb stop or not to connect the water line, that did not happen. I talked directly to the general contractors, he said, no one from the city come to him, so he installed it according to the contract. After that, I guess, project moved along, and on Sunday, September twenty eighth, I received a text message from Bruce. You can see that, the dates that I highlighted with. And in response to the text message. Uh he's he emailed it to me at. One oh two P M in the afternoon, I was on a road from the back for Minneapolis, and I replied at three thirty, three twenty three on the same day. Told him I agreed with his remarks. And stated, have him cut it off, which meaning him being the general contractor. Cause they had the parking lot open. I blew up the. Message that Bruce sent, and I highlighted a couple of things. If accordance with our ordinances, he needs to disconnect the service line to the curb stop. He, which must be me, I'm assuming. Uh and I'm not a contractor. Um but I've worked with many, many municipal. The owner of the project, which is the city of Virgus, had the sole responsibility to communicate with the contractor. Either through the city's representative or through the engineer, none of that. Okay? None of this was communicated to me. In retrospect, somebody should have talked to him, yeah, ask me. When the new curb stop was installed and the service reconnected, okay, so he's admitting that no one talked to him, okay? Just want to make sure this all happens before the painting takes place, okay? So. It did not happen. The I talked to Tori the following Monday, this was seven Sunday, I talked to Tori at one o'clock on Monday, asked him if the. City had contacted him to disconnect the water. Tori said, no, he said, I've not been contacted by the city in any manner regarding this water main service. So I feel I've made three separate attempts and told the city, I do not want the water, I do not want the water main disconnect this. So Bruce, as you see in this letter, referred back to cutting of the water. And you see the city of Frazee, they had a similar discussion, if you read the Frazee farm a week or two ago. At that point in time, I told Tori. Two days before the asphalt contractor gets in there, let's dig it up and cut it off. And he said, that would be extremely expensive, and that has to come from this city, which I've never heard. After that, I learned that cutting of the water line was not. Thought as disconnecting of the water main service. If the billing starts at the curb stop. Okay, the curb stop was already installed. First off, the city, as I told them not to install it prior twice, prior to installation of curb stop. Could have saved twenty five hundred bucks and not put the curb stop it. Disconnected the line, disconnected curb stop and left it. So therefore, I guess, my feeling is that I should not be charged with a look back. And I should not be charged with overlook of the water service, so. Timelines are, September eleventh, talked to Julie. And told her I did not want water slip, okay? September sixteen, council approved the bill. September seventeen. Bruce Albright and I met, talked, said, I do not want the service, that's the second time I said I did not want to. September seventeenth, every time, uh Councilman Albright talked to Lambert. September nineteenth, curb stop were installed, water reconnected. September twenty eighth. Um. Talked to the general contractor, whether either Julie or the city superintendent talked to. The general contractor to get the water main disconnected, this is two days prior to the asphalt contractor moving in. And he said, no one has talked to him at all, and that comes from the general contractor. And he said, no one has talked to him at all, and that comes from the general contractor. So. My, my, back on the twenty eighth, again, you can see I responded in writing not to connect the water. So. Uh, so I talked to the general contractor, as I said, and so I feel that as a citizen. That I have done everything in my power to get this water line disconnected. Okay, nowhere ever was Councilman Albright or anyone told that the curb stop was the billing source. Always was presented cutting of the water line, about four feet of water line was considered discediment. After the fact, it turns out that the curb stop is the building, where the building serves. And curb stop could have easily not been installed, which would have saved the city. So I don't think that the council was led in the right direction. I don't know, I've not seen an ordinance regarding water lines that have vacate, not vacated, but never turned on for thirty three years. And I feel that I should not be charged, especially a three year look back, and I should not be charged going into the future. Unless I energize that water line and put in a water meter.
One correction in that, on September eleventh, when we talked, we were talking about your sewer line. You had spoken with Sonberg about getting sewer put into your building. And I had spoken to Lane about that, and when I called to talk to you about, we were talking about if you wanted to add sewer to the building. We did not discuss the water line on September.
Okay, I, I would just want to say that. I got my story, she's got hers, I had, the sewer line was there, I talked to Tori. Uh, the general contractor, excuse me, that the city line was abandoned. And just connect, stub the sewer line in, it would make sense, and Tori said, no, we cannot tap onto a city sewer line. That every cap has to be his own, and for me to get to the main was extremely expensive, thirty, thirty some thousand dollars. I said, forget it, I don't need a sewer, I don't need water, we're just going to disconnect the holders.
Bruce, you have the ordinance there?
Yeah, um, fifty two point two eight. Talks about abandoned or unused services, not, this read A there. If the premises served by water has been abandoned, which is not the case, Paul is obviously still using his building. Or if the service has not been used for one year, which hasn't been used for thirty three years. Then the service may be shut off at the curb stop by the city, and the water meter will be removed. Which there never was a water meter installed. Then it goes down fifty two point two nine, says disconnection permit. A permit must be obtained to disconnect from the existing water service leads at the curb stop box. The fee for this permit shall be set pursuant to fifty two point five one. So, to somewhat summarize for the, I'm assuming most of the council knows, but. When they were digging up the parking lot back there, they found his curb stop. And I don't know if anybody knew where it was, it had got covered with asphalt. If he would have come to us two months ago or three months ago and said, I want to hook up the water. What would we have done, Mike? I would, as I said, we don't know where your curb stop is.
But I didn't know they had a curb stop till who said the bit.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'd like to respond a little bit to that, so you're insinuating, or you're telling me that you did not know that I had water service, or that you did not know I had a curb stop?
I didn't know you had a curb stop, I don't think anybody really.
Water service after stop are two different things, did the city know that I had water main in the building?
No, I did not.
Okay, so when I acquired the building for my mother back in two thousand fourteen. And this is going to be here, we say, you say, uh, I was called by the city and said, we're going to start charging you for water. And after I, after all the paperwork was done, and I said, this has been in there for twenty three years, never had water. I disagree with it, I don't want water, and I believe I should have to pay for water, and it was dropped at that point. So the city knew back in two thousand sixteen that there was water service to that bill. Whether they knew where the curb stop was or not, that is. But all water services in the city, if you have water service in your building, there is a curb stop somewhere.
Yeah, when we, when we got city water, we had to, we had to guarantee that everybody would be hooked up for the curb stop.
And that curb stop was installed because the funeral home, now the city offices, did not have water. The water came from the hardware store, and so when the water came in the vergis, my mother elected to. Bring water to the funeral home or the city offices, and that was in nineteen ninety three. And at the same time, you know, stub water into. No, into the truck, the post office has a curb stop right over by the side. There are three curb stops, there's one for post office, one for city offices, and one for. Two were located in the alley, one is located.
And I think that, so. When his mom would have hooked up to the water, she would have gotten her assessments like we all did to pay for the water. Project or whatever, I mean, shit, we don't remember, but everybody got assessed over a period there to pay that off. He hasn't used the water, I mean, it, the pipe is kinked in his building. With, I think our last conversations on this were, if it's. I'd hate to see this come to a technicality, the water is off now, it's turned off at the curb stop. The curb stop was brought up flush with the new asphalt, we know where the curb stop is, the water is off, he's not getting water. If we got caught in a technicality somewhat like Prezy was talking about, this is, well, no, you have to disconnect it. At the curb stop, unhook the service line. I mean, no water is no water, it was turned off at the curb stop, or was, was the difference? Yeah, so the last correspondence was to say, if this is going to become a technicality with Julie, I was working with her. Then if they're going to dig down and unhook it, if that's the technicality, we should do it before the, before the. Payment gets put down, and in fact, our last conversation, I think almost before I got home, Julia texted me and said. I just talked to them, they're going to start paving tomorrow. So that was the end of, not going to get disconnected anymore.
And they didn't pay the following morning, uh, the paving contractor had to come in and get the final grade. Tori brought it to subgrade, the paving contractor had to get the final grade, so he graded there for a day and a half. Paving didn't go in for another day and a half after that. So there was technically time to dig, dig down to that service and disconnect.
Do you, that's up to you, Paul, do you want to share what you had discussed with me about where you think this should go from this point forward?
I discussed with Bruce saying that, you know, perhaps what we should do was not do it up there. And that I would pay water service for. However, after thinking about this more time, I do not, I'm going to rescind that, I do not believe that I should pay water service for.
Going forward, the month.
I think it should be, no bill, no, no bills from the look back and no future bill. And I even mentioned to, to Julie, that I'll go out there and I weld the nut on the curb stop so that it can't be turned. And she said, no, that wouldn't be.
Off is off.
Karen, if you want to enlighten us, I mean, I feel like the communication broke down, that no water. Didn't know it was there, I know that those are all peripheral.
Well, the communication thing is that no one of you has the authority to act on behalf of the city. The body of you acts on behalf of the city, and, um. I, did anybody communicate to your utility man that there was any issue, I mean. You appear to be an adult, you know that there are people who do different things with.
I was a general manager.
And so you generally communicate with the people with authority and, um. I realize that the world is strange now, and texting and tweeting and. All of those things seem to be acceptable forms of communications, but if you want to not have water. A proven person would write a letter to the city and the clerk and say, I don't want to have water, I don't want to have any connector. Um, I mean, ultimately, you all get to decide what it is that you want to do, but no one of you. Has the authority to bind the city, collectively, you are the city, and, um. You should expect people to communicate in a. Timely way with the people who make the, who make the decisions, coordinate with, um. The people in charge of the particular project within the city, but. I mean, you, you can decide what, I mean, your ordinance is, what your ordinance is. And if we want to change your ordinance, or you all want to make an exception because of whatever, we, we do that.
See, I, I have a response a little bit to that, so from the first contact, the time the paving went in was twenty one days. We shouldn't argue whether I told the city three times or two times not to reconnect. Councilman Albright admitted that we, the conversation did take place, if you look at the text message. That was said on September twenty eighth, I have him cut it off, meaning have him cut the water main off. So at no time was I told that I needed to have any writing to the city. Or any, in, in, you know, I figured our conversation with Councilman Albright. What, and his conversation with Julie, was it was documented through that, okay? So I don't feel that I was communicated too very well by the city, if they told me write us a letter, I would have wrote a letter. That's, that's not very difficult to do. In retrospect also, the general contractor never once was talked to from the city. Or the engineering firm about that curb stop on not putting in the curb stop or not putting in the water. Twenty one days went by, and it got fixed.
Just a Julie question, so when someone gets their water, like, turned off, they didn't pay their bill. They just get their water shut off, we still get.
They still pay the base rate.
They still pay the base rate even when the water shut off.
That is correct, and everybody, um, everybody that leaves for the winter, they shut their water off, um. They still pay the base rate all winter long, um, if somebody, I mean, we have others that hasn't been in her house. For years, she pays every month.
But they have wa- actual water service and water meter, I don't have a water meter.
I, I, I get that, but they also aren't attached to the water, like, there is the potential to be hooked up to water. That's why, that's my only question, not anything with this, I just was wondering where that.
And, and bear in mind, this is a cold story, Bill, so they're not.
I understand the building, yeah.
I have a question, we've talked about the curb stop, which I've been listening to this since the beginning. It isn't the curb stop that gets shut off, it's the corporation part that goes on to the main. That needs to be, so we need, when we abandon the line, we dig to the main, and we have to shut that corp off. And that's. That's on the main, that's what hooks up the water, and in our ordinance, it should be that. The customer is responsible all the way to that corporation, which I know that that was brought up into the city when all them. Freeze ups were happening across the region, and we made it so that the, the. Homeowner is responsible all the way to the main, he doesn't allow it. That's where he shut off at the moon, not at the curb stop, because the corp is still. Well, no time was anybody had talked about going to the main. We talked about the curb stop.
And rather than, I would know nothing.
The curb stop that we, that we replaced, we replaced all the curb stops in there because they were all rusted. And that's why we replaced every one of them, and the city put that bill on the curb stops. Because they needed to be done, and we didn't talk to anybody about replacing any of them, we didn't talk to the liquor store. We didn't talk to the post office, and we didn't talk amongst Julie, well, Julie and I talked about it. And that's why it wasn't brought up to him, he was already hooked up to the moon. And in the past, we had the people that owned the old Coop across the street from the hardware store, when that was up. And they paid their bill all the time until they dug up into the road and shut the corp off. And I believe there's been three other people in town, in my time of being here. That came to the city, up to the city here, and asked if they could be exempt from. The water shut, from the water shut off, and that would be the Loon's Nest above the Loon's Nest. And above American Beauty and the. Coop, or whatever you call it. What?
The baseball building? Oh, the elevator, it's not progress.
So, but the other buildings did not get to have to do the corp because they still needed the main water. Or the thing, the other one was Kim Doyle's, that Burgess sixty six.
So there, at the curb stops, there are two pipes coming from the main, one for.
There's one coming from the main that hooks the curb stop to the.
To both, to both curb stops, one main to two curb stops?
What, what's that?
There's one main from the main water service feeding two curb stops.
I think there's two in town that do that.
Okay, so if I would remove the pipe from the main, the. The funeral home or the city offices would not have one, because there are one pipe feeding two curb stops, so. It doesn't make sense for me to go back to the water main if I took that expense and disconnect it. Because then the city offices would not have one, there's one main feeding two curb stops.
Julie, do we have any correspondence of the two thousand sixteen where he had, um. Was exempt with the payment, like, for paying for the water service?
And don't recall.
Anything from that? But is, that's, would be interesting to see why that, or how that was, why you were exempted from it for.
It was the one, it would, to be honest, that one phone call deal, it would, I'm not saying, we're, it's ridiculous, we're not doing it, and I never heard.
I mean, the ordinances, I'm looking at fifty two, three, three here, water connections, applications and charges. Number three says, water billing shall start at the time of the installation of the water meter. You know, so never was a water meter installed. I mean, is it a good thing that we now have a curb stop for that building? And it costs something, I'm assuming for the parking lot to, project to put that in, I think it is. I mean, at least now we know where the curb stop is, it's there, as everything, Paul's not going to own that building forever. And someday the new owner or whatever may want to put water in, we don't know, but at least the option is available to us.
Right, yeah.
You know, go back and say, well, when they found that curb stop, should have wood sets or whatever, went and talked to Paul and said, hey. We think this is your building, do you want a new one put in, I mean, they didn't need to put a new one in, the old one was unfunctional. They took it out and they wanted to put a new one in, or, you know, Mike could have went and talked to Paul and said, what are we going to do here? We found your curb stop, it doesn't work, should we put a new one in or not, nope, that discussion didn't take place, it got put in. I think that's better for the city to have it there, we know where it is, than when it all where the thing even was. But when it comes to the charges and the billing and how we move forward. I would, through all of these discussions, we have two, what do you said, two businesses in town right now that are paying for. Curb stops that they do not use because they're still hooked up.
Abandoned. So.
What you said, I don't know if you can call mine abandoned or not, but. Never been in a pod, so it's not really.
Well, you utilize it, it doesn't sit, right, you utilize it.
You're like what?
You're a chef or story.
Mike, do we know how much damage or what the cost would be to shut it off?
Well, shut it off already though.
I know, but going down and actually capping it?
Not if you dig it all the way back to the main.
You can't dig it back to the main because they're shared with the administration.
I don't know my people, if our ordinances support that either, right? As Julie and I looked at some of that, I you have to dig further into it. Sometimes ordinances are as clear as mud, you know.
So so theoretically, if I had to disconnect that main, I'd dig down wherever the main is, meet a contractor, disconnect the pipe, cut it off, and disconnect. After that, build a hole in, asphalt it over. City offices no longer have water now. So the city has to come in, dig it up again, reconnect the line, shoot the main, to get water.
As we have put two of those in one spot.
In the old days.
Why would it be?
Was a well at the hardware store and that's been.
Yeah.
I do realize that, but why would that one be connected to the city now when it was never there before?
When they hooked up, they didn't hook up the, there's a big one line to one person. They just hooked up to the existing line.
In the last couple of weeks?
No, 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 this is years ago.
Back in the funeral home was built, the funeral home was built up. The funeral home was used obviously very rarely, they, you know, people, you know, they died. And after Roger and Rodney, that hardware store, and they just wore dad or whoever had it beforehand, would just tap onto the our well and feed the funeral, because of the niceness of their heart. If I can show you in the city office, there is a wooden box right under all of the hardware store that there is actually shut off in there too. And there's a shut off in your building that I think is also been shut up in fact. That is.
Yeah, I can show you that.
I'm asking you why you think the city office would go off? If that was disconnected, because that's only been connected in the last couple of weeks.
Because.
How could they be connected together?
Because they brought one line from the water, the main water main service, they brought one line. And they brought it to the curb stop and they fed two curbs up with one line. So if what Mike is saying, I had to disconnect the line at the water main, I'd also be disconnecting the city off.
If we go that far, we just take it to the s- the closest place.
Which is still.
If that's the case, I don't know if there's one line or two. Again, there's no mapping of it, so.
I I guess it doesn't really matter. It just seemed kinda silly to me to do something this far after the fact. It's okay. I realize that nothing else makes sense to me all.
Yeah, and I think in the specs, and I would like to have a copy of the video specs if I could. Um, it says that the all utilities needed to be put in prior to the paving. And for five years, the parking lot can't be cut. So that's why I already brought internet to my building and fiber to the city offices.
I think from a city perspective, we don't wanna start messing with the parking lot.
Is anyone ready to make a motion or recommendation? Do we feel we need to go and look further? Um, at anything?
You could get some information about prices.
That's what I'm wondering, if we need to just look into this a little further and not make a decision without knowing what some of those costs would be if the age action.
Well, the cost would be that we would cut the new parking lot. And we'd dig up the water main. And we have a huge hole, there was a huge hole for them. My my new parking lot would be cut up. And the city's alley would be cut up. And we'd have heavy equipment on the new parking lot, putting the spoil on the parking lot. All for thirty-five dollars a month.
Off is off, whether you turn it off at the curb stop or whatever. And hook it at the curb stop. It's off is off.
I already can turn it off is off until we start sending people water off. And then they all don't wanna pay the thirty-five dollars.
But they all had previous water.
Regarding on vacation for a month, I want my watershed turned off, I still have to pay, I shouldn't have paid thirty-five dollars.
They had water running.
Yes.
Obviously, we have to be consistent on this. What we do for one, we do for, you said the elevator had it, never used it, but they paid them on pay fee.
We do need to have a water and sewer committee meeting before the next council meeting. So you might want them to look into all the different options and bring something back next time.
I I would like something more solid that we aren't just bouncing ideas here and we got, you know, solid options. You know, I just kinda sent some from the discussion. That doesn't mean that's what we're limited to, so. Um, I think, when do they meet?
You don't have a date set.
Oh, but it'll be prior to our next.
Prior to our next meeting.
I would make a motion that we table this for tonight, um, to be continued at our next council meeting, um, in November. And that in the interim, uh, water and sewer meet and bring back a recommendation to the full council in this regard.
If they have a motion.
Uh, just one question, do you want to, and you can vote on that first, but would we like to um eliminate late fees to Paul during the time that we are looking into?
I would amend my motion to include that there would be no late charges applied to the bill while this is being tabled and discussed.
Um, call for the votes, I want favor and Kate, I say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Well, I I would do a whole bit, but I do have one probably. I'd like to talk about the easement agreement. Bring me in the city. And you will see by your drawing I handed you, the city curb stops were placed on my property. The city water line runs through my property and then cuts over into the city office. So I would like to have an easement agreement drawn up above that water line. And you see fixtures that are put in there. And in that agreement, there would be verbiage such as if the building was ever expanded, the removal and replacement for that water line would be at the city's expense. If the city need maintenance on it, when they open up the parking lot, the city would be at the city's expense also. And I think I would wanna also add on to that, that for the easement, for the rights to the easement, I will not pay water bill until I deliver. And if that's not agreeable, the city can move the water line to the curb stop.
Well, that's certainly nothing we can decide right here tonight.
I just wanted you to be aware of.
Yeah, we will.
And you, which.
We'll plan a meeting on Monday night, we'll bring in on that.
I also, I also asked you that.
It's back here.
Uh, handout is the sort of strategic survey for my property and for your property. I gave a copy to, or your clerk took an email or a picture of the survey. And have that sent to the engineer, so that script so that property can can be placed for the certified survey. And if your engineer needs to talk to my surveyor, which is Metaland, I will give them the uh, go ahead and talk to Metaland.
Lane is is here.
It's here, so.
Blaine Green is on, he's with Woodsets and we had a street committee meeting, Paul and I were at, and the tins couple of Paul's property pins were knocked out when green construction. And that would normally be a project cost to put those pins back in. And then Paul has asked at his expense to have yellow lines painted on the north, west and south sides of his buildings when they're there doing the striping and that will be at his expense.
I'm I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. I've been putting up with people on our property. Combs and all that stuff, I'm really done with that. I don't wanna do it. I just would like to have some respect from the city. Your your tenant, the postal authority, they they have these land behind their building for pickup and and bringing the mail to it. I'd like them to use their property instead of my property. I'm just trying to be a good neighbor and not try to bother the neighborhood, so.
They signed a contract to lease that land though.
It's all signed, it's all part of the contract for certain amount.
Their land, not his one.
No, it's the post, it's the city's land leased to the postal.
Between the post office and your building?
No, there's a lease between the post office and the city. There is not one between.
Well, when you, so let's run through all the decision making process of the worker. You're gonna have your meeting, will I be invited to it or talk to a buddy?
Yeah, it would be in your interest to come to our November council meeting, the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay, what's the meeting? Where you're gonna make the.
No, no decisions at the planning meeting. Water and sewer has to meet in that meeting.
And then I think on the agenda, we should talk about the um, easement.
Yeah, the easement will have to go forward to their um, streets and framing or.
You don't think when that was installed, Paul, back in nineteen ninety-three, they didn't, they just ran the lines and there were no easements?
So if you look on there, you'll see, I think the way it works, either comes from the curb stop straight towards the hardware station, so in a joint trench. The two water lines were ran in a giant trench, one then branched off into my building. And then the water line continued towards the hardware store and took a forty-five degree angle into the government. And both curb stops that Tori put in, and you can look at the pictures, they're all done. Are are were installed on my property. They were not, they were not sold yet. Any questions from there?
Nope, no, we will power the easements and the water sewer will address.
Julie, I'll give you this line of flowers.
Perfect, yeah, I need that.
Used to water and sewer.
Okay.
Thank you much.
So the many reports are.
Going on water.
Um, the first clue report is um, E D A H R H, um, Lucy, you addressing that?
We've got a lot over on Diane Street that someone has expressed an interest in purchasing. But the road dead ends before the lot begins. So they've asked uh, E D A to address how do we uh, get access to that lot? Mike and I looked at it prior to the meeting. And it's one of those things that's not as simple as it sounds.
The four-one-nine?
Yeah, yeah. Um, there is an amount of dirt there, there's probably thirty trees in there that would have to be removed to get access to that mound of dirt. Um, and we don't know that we have a buyer, so from an E D A perspective, if we were to spend, we were gonna come to the city and say, extend the street, well, that's almost impossible unless you almost redo the whole lot. You know, and I would recommend to E D A, if if we could find a buyer that would give us, make an offer on that lot and say, we'll do the dirt work and let them take care of it, even if it was a reduced offer. I I'd hate to see the city, through the E D A or the city, put a whole bunch of money in there, extend the road and we never sell the lot. Right? Because if I was gonna do it, if I was, I'd make a reduced offer on that lot, I'd build my driveway and I would shape it so I could build my future home there. That's what needs to be done. So Mike and I came to the same determination just prior to tonight's meeting. I think we'll take it back to E D A and discuss with them as to how they might wanna proceed. It's not as simple as just.
So the recommendation um, from the E D A H R A proposed to extend the road to.
We would withdraw that at this point in time, given our observations.
Okay, or would we counter propose? I mean, do you have the authority to say for the E D A that we're not gonna?
No, I, we would just take it back to them and say, we took it to the city.
Yeah, okay.
And uh, they, cause they knew we, Mike and I were gonna look at it and we did and say it's more complicated than just extending the road.
Okay, so that will go back. And then the other recommendation was through uh, resignation?
Yes, Dwayne Diedrich has officially put in his resignation from E D A. Um, that would be effective the end of the year, twelve thirty-one twenty-five, and I would make a motion to accept said resignation.
You have a second from Paul. Any further discussion? Uh, favor indicate by say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, accepted. Um, then we have, um, daycare.
It might not be the minutes, but we need to water and sewer hook up.
I don't know, Julie, is that, we didn't, did we make a recommendation to ask the city?
To ask the city to not.
Waive the fee?
To waive the fee for water and sewer.
Is it in their discussion about, it's not in the recommendations?
I gotta get back to the minutes here. It was a request made. What Julie's talking about is E D A continues to look at options regarding daycare for the city of Burgess. Uh, we've had a private party um, through Saint John's Lutheran Church, but another private party there that's got a vacant lot that might be interested in just building a daycare. In kind of working with the church, which would kind of be the best of all worlds and and we'd have a daycare. And they were wondering, I think the question came up, would the city consider waiving the water and sewer hookup fee if they were to build a new building at that location? I think we've got, you know, we can get the cart way ahead of the horse here, but we don't even know if this is gonna transpire into anything, so.
Did you not have the meeting with them? And they're hoping to.
Get an answer tonight?
Well, we could wait till next meeting at the latest, but um, they're hoping to break dirt this spring. This is new to you, yes, yeah, we have met, Jordan and I met with them once and we will be meeting again. Um, but so like during my report, which I think I'll just ask now at the same time, is in a residential area, you must have a conditional use permit to have a daycare? So they're, so in their requests of building this daycare, they would like to have the water and sewer hookup fees um, waived as well as the four hundred dollar um, conditional use permit. Uh, or conditional use permit fee waived um, to have a daycare in a residential area.
So are we gonna see that in writing, like a request to us, or are we?
I can request that if you would like.
I I just don't wanna go by excuse say.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanna know they're asking these things for them to proceed in our November meeting would be okay?
Yes.
Yeah, cause then they might come back and say, no, no, that wasn't really.
Yes.
I just think it'd be easier for us to act. Oh, do you?
Would it be, it would be nice to know the twenty dollars dollars that are involved?
Yes.
We want this and this and this, but what this and this and that, how much is stolen?
Yeah, stolen that, yeah, Julie, if you could put a dollar. And if we got time at that November meeting, I think it would be much smoother for us to act on. Um, the next is um, liquor store.
So liquor store pretty much last week, last year, yeah. And um, we have two recommendations to the council. Do you wanna explain then? What thing is I'm trying to give a brief description?
You can go.
Okay, so um, there's an ordinance for um, with low potency THC drinks. Um, all entities that are selling now have to apply for a permit um, October, October thirty-first. Um, one of the rules that has changed in that, that it has stated, if you do sell a low potency THC, you are not allowed to have anyone under the age of twenty-one in the liquor store. So we toss back and forth, you know, do we continue to carry the THC and we would not be able to have anyone under the age of twenty-one in there? Um, or do we discontinue the THC drinks so that we can continue to have people under the age of twenty-one as long as they are not, do not have the intent to buy? As the ordinance states that they cannot have the intent to purchase, which would be if a parent brings a child in, so they're not sitting in the car. You know, that would be, they can't touch anything, that that is not an intent to to purchase, so. So um, we discussed it back and forth, um. The THC drinks have brought in a fair amount of money, um. The THC drinks have brought in a fair amount of money of, and we've kind of seen that trend of that's where. This kind of our 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 community's kind of going, but um. We didn't know how to proceed with that, but we made a motion to make a recommendation to the council, so.
So the recommendation is no one under twenty-one allowed in the liquor store?
And continue to sell the THC drinks.
So kids cannot come in.
Even toddlers, infant babies, you know, like under twenty-one.
Do a lot of people bring their kids in, kind of?
Some, we we discussed that too. Um, obviously it varies by season, but yeah, there's. There's a decent number. I mean, I kinda average maybe one to two a day, probably.
So is there currently a sign or you'll be putting something up?
If if this passes or if you guys agree upon it, then there will be a lot of signage in the beginning anyways and just to make. Make everybody fully aware of that, zero exceptions to it.
What do you? Crystal ball here, a what-if question. When our new marijuana store opens in Burgess? Do you think the liquor store will still have a role to play in selling the THC drinks and THC products you currently sell?
And I I brought that up to this meeting. Um, don't quote me, but I'm fairly certain that the new store will not be carrying these products that we're discussing here.
You think the city would still have a role?
I I just don't believe our business will be carrying it. Yeah, we can, we legally can, but I don't believe we will. And as of right now, Burgess is the only one. Probably until you hit the next neighbor in town.
Well, we have a recommendation to no one under twenty-one allowed in the liquor store. Um, we have a recommendation from James from the Liquor Store Committee. For a second.
Just.
Okay, we have a second from Paul and we'll do the discussion. Comfortable, tell him favor and keep the same eye.
Will this be immediately, starting tomorrow or as of October thirty-first?
Um, the second recommendation is we need to put the permit application under a person's name. Um, and our current lieutenant chair cannot um have his name with it as he's already tied to. Um, for the sanctuary in town's application. So we are looking to expand the city clerk position to register um the THC. Application under her name.
And just to clarify, that's not like a personal preference, that's state law, that only one business can be affiliated per person.
So it's like permanent or temporary or?
Of all the research I did, maybe you know, I don't know, but as far as I can tell. Let's say you do put it in Julie's name and she leaves in five years, I, from what I can tell, you can, she can or the city can um. Apply to have her removed. So I don't believe it's.
Registration is an annual thing that you have to put another person's name in. I'm looking up with the county, cuz we have to register with Otter Town County, who is the one that is saying no one under twenty-one can be in the liquor store. Um, and we have to register with the state and with the county, I know that once um. If we in in the future get a liquor store manager that can put, we can switch it. Or if I leave the city, then we can switch it to the next person's. So, uh yes, I haven't, I'm not a hundred percent on the states, but I believe that can also be transferred over with employment or with. Like anytime that a position's changed, we can change, we can take my name off.
Is that okay with you? You're okay to do that? I mean, some people would be and some people wouldn't be, and I'm not giving judgment here. I need some pain control as much as some people do, but. You know, would you ask Rachel to do it if you didn't wanna do it or? I mean, I don't, I don't mean to be difficult, I'm just saying that isn't something everybody would wanna do. That one, I mean, Julie, they recommended Julie, so she either will have to decline here and say no, or I don't know if that the liquor store committee meeting. You accepted it. Um, I don't know.
We we discussed a bunch of options out there and we, she was doing a bunch of research to make sure she was comfortable with it. So at that point, we had made the recommendation, but.
Now, the question was brought up also about liability, if if an underage purchase was to be made, does that fall on Julie?
And especially if she's not there all the time?
I don't know if you've researched that, if I'm not Julie.
I have, and it is the person that sells. Um, so if something happens and someone under the age of twenty-one comes in and purchases something, it goes by the person selling it. And then um if we have that happen, um then it will come against the liquor store. If unless I was at the tail selling, it will not come after me.
I think it's just a formality. I would make a motion that we authorize Julie to sign our. Application.
All in favor indicate the same eye.
Aye.
I'm gonna, can we put that as clerk treasurer to?
That way, because somebody else has your.
It belongs to the position, no.
Yeah, this this was for registering the business with the state. Um, so I I think her name would be down as applicant, I think that's how it would be. But her and I are gonna meet in the very near future to get this. Finalized, so.
Okay, um, we are down to staff reports, Mike.
Oh, I put my staff report in, and there's, do you guys have any questions for me?
My my only question, I'm sorry, my question was, um, you listed like the number of gallons and some of this, is this? Preparable to use to date, like just for numbers wise? I I I don't have that in for me. With me to give that to you, but no, that's. And this would be nice, cuz I like.
Yeah, the, like the wastewater, that's.
Yeah.
That's comparable, I believe, I think that's pretty right on. A lot of it's got to do with the runoff from the rainwater.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so. But that's, but I mean, I could, you know, get the information from the assistant clerk.
Nothing jumped out at you, it seemed pretty consistent.
Correct.
No other questions? Hey, thank you, Mike. Uh, Liquor Store management report.
Recently, the, I wasn't able to wear this was coming, but recently the final coat of sealer was applied to the new concrete that was poured. Um, so the concrete should be completely finished. Still waiting to hear back from Refine or Summers as far as the start date. Um, they're aware of it to get going, I have not heard.
Those are gutters and.
And also I have not heard back from J H signs yet, however, we found out that. The contact person's been out of town until tomorrow. So I'll email or call him tomorrow to see how our sign is coming along to get put in. Um, as was kinda briefly discussed a little bit ago, THC sales are definitely increasing, which is why I was. Recommending that we continue selling that instead of getting rid of it. Um, the only two categories honestly that are on the consistent highs are non-alcohol and THC. So alcohol is on high alert right now about how to increase that. Um, I have, I can't remember, five or six samplings scheduled out for about the next month, month and a half. I didn't wanna put it on here cuz it's not finalized just yet, but I'm trying to collab with a different business in town about getting some advertisement signage at their business. One, if that's approved by them and finalized, then I will bring that to the next council meeting about who that is. And I just read, Julie has a copy, we did not get, I did not get it into the packet, but Shawna Jones has put in her resignation. I don't remember the effective date. About a week or two, she is done.
Are you replacing or?
Typically over winter, we shrink part-time staff down a lot, so over winter, no.
Oh, how was the wine sales from the wine lock?
Big, like always, yeah, that's one of the bigger wine weeks. Oh, that is the biggest wine week of the year.
We need a motion to accept.
Mayor, if we could go back quickly, we did miss an item on um. Uh, street sidewalk and yard waste committee, a pretty important one too. Uh, it's approved applying for local road improvement project program for Glen Street and West um Lake Street. It's primarily West Lake Street. Um, that's the road that goes back to Mannables, uh, out there by the recycling. Uh, that road is pretty hazardous, there's some straight up and down banks, um, some hills, Glen Street meets. Uh, West Lake Street right at the cre- kind of the crest of a hill. Uh, when it snows, I've been in there with Mike and I mean, you can't even, the road looks like a tunnel, the trees and everything that hang over the road. We did apply for this grant um a couple of years ago. We were this, like the first project that didn't get funded, so it scored fairly well. That application product process is open again with a deadline of.
December first.
December first, and uh we would recommend, uh, street department would recommend that the council authorize. Uh, Woodset and Julie to resubmit that application in conjunction with approval from Otter Town County, I would have.
And um we have an estimated cost for Woodset to not exceed two thousand five hundred dollars, it will be at an hourly rate. Because there's small models that need to be done.
But if that road's gonna get fixed, uh, this grant would be an excellent opportunity for that, and since we did score quite well the last time, I'd like to think we could resubmit it. And maybe be a little more successful.
It was in Julie's report too, so I was thinking it was coming. It's good, got it addressed, so. Um, we have a motion, is there a second? Other questions? Okay, comfortable, tell him favor and keep the same eye. Prefer to proceed with the grant. Anything else?
You can.
Lane, would you like to do a review of the parking lot?
Sure, um, I can speak on that a little bit. Um, as you guys have uh seen, it's it's essentially complete. Uh, or substantially complete, I guess would be the technical contract term. Um. The last couple of things hanging out there are obviously the striping that needs to be done. Um, and then a little bit of signage uh and and punch list items uh from Tori and his his company. Um, the one thing I'm working with my surveyors on are to get the the pins set back in on Paul's property. There, um, you know, one of them was too close to the existing catch basin that was there, there was just. It was inevitable that we were going to disturb that pin, so some of those things, it's just part of con- construction. Um, so again, we're gonna with the kind, or my uh surveyor to get those back in. And I'm kinda wondering, um, uh, I'll work with Paul or we we can kinda figure it out, you know, he mentioned some of that easement stuff when it comes to the water services and water main. Um, if he wants the utility easement, we could potentially work on in that at the same time. Uh, again, w- once we get there, we we can, we can figure that out. Um, but um, let's see, I'm trying to think of. If there's anything else, I was, I'll work on uh getting the the pay estimate and I'll I'll have all the splits. Figured out of, you know, what's going to Hanson's, what's part of the city, what's assessed, all of that stuff. Um, and I'll get that to Julie here in the uh coming week or so. Um, and then at the next council meeting, I'm sure we'll have the the pay estimate ready for that. Um, it's tracking uh probably a little bit over. The the bid of, I think it was a hundred fifty-four thousand, give or take. Um, part of that is uh, you know, some of the changes, we widened out some of the areas with some bituminous. Um, and then also the subgrade corrections that I think we talked about at the last meeting, um, that were needed. Uh, you know, if if we just encountered soils that were unsuitable, we wanted to make sure we get it right. Um, and so that's, that's where a little bit of extra cost will go into there too. Um, so, yeah, is there any questions uh regarding the parking lot at all from the council?
Any updates as to when they might be striping that? Because, you know, the clock is literally ticking.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm still working with our surveyors to get in there. Uh, once we get those pins set, then we can get the the striping done at the same time. Um, but but I don't have a a firm date on that yet.
Anything else? Anything else from Kyle? Any other questions of Kyle? We kind of got diverted here. Anything? We'll move on to Julie's report.
I provided the written report and we've discussed the items that we need on discussion.
Any other questions of Julie? Here in one, we have concluded with the end of our agenda, agenda, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, we have twenty-six annual fund budget.
Oh, that's right, cuz we were really talking twenty twenty-six. We will be um approving that in December. But um Julie took a look at if we didn't get the thirty thousand. Uh, from the liquor store, we will be looking at um where the money could come from, Julie gives us a summarize now for twenty-five.
So twenty twenty-five, our income may be a little less because it's looking like we're probably not going to be getting the thirty thousand from the liquor store. Hopefully, um, we will still be able to get ten to fifteen thousand, which would make us at a fifteen thousand dollar. So it's something for you guys to think about, um, if we want to not move the fifteen thousand from the parks over to their savings. Or the streets over to their savings. Those are the two areas that have the capital outlay. Um, and so it's something, those are the two areas that you'll want to consider probably for the next meeting. If um where we're looking, we will have, you know, another month's worth of information from the liquor store at that time. Um, the streets though are looking at a huge street, expensive street project, um, as well as equipment that they are going to be needing. The parks, we are looking at a sales tax, um, and if that went through, I mean, that would be a couple of things to take into consideration. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not trying to sway which way you go at all, but those are things that you're gonna wanna be thinking about before the November or December meeting.
And then the parks have a lawn mower.
That's in the twenty twenty-six budget that they'll be looking at, purchasing a lawn mower. We would not be taking anything from twenty twenty-six, we would just make it a, um, where the committees usually we crest, we crest. Funds to be transferred um for their, into their savings for future spending, that is the amount that we'd be taking this on.
Any other questions that you want? The final budget will be in December, the fire board has not met yet and so we're not sure that they're gonna be asking for. Um, more money this for next year, so. Okay, with that, final business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So a second.